Mike's wrong. Okay, Gardner shows up, okay.
Look at that. All right, good evening everyone, welcome to the November meeting of the Odeon Zoning Commission. This evening we have at the table, we have our counsel attorney Matt Willis, we have Mary Gardner Coppola, an alternate, we have Mr. Michael Fogliano, an alternate, short timer alternate, we have full time member Denise Savage Joe, Mary Jo Nozel, full time, our secretary Jane Marsh, Michael Peter Barnes, alternate, and myself Paul Orzal. So welcome all to the meeting. And now that I have welcomed you all to the meeting, our first item on the agenda.
We need to seat very large enough for Mike Miller.
Want to do it now or when we?
Well, yeah, theoretically you just do it.
All right, okay. Who are now your voting member? Adam? Mr. Miller is not here and it's time in the rotation for you.
Okay.
So if any voting conversations, whatever you're in.
Understood, thank you.
Okay. All right, now that everyone's comfortable, the zoning commission will be going into executive session. I don't know how long that executive session will be, but regardless of the fact that I'm going to have to ask everyone that just the zoning commission take the room.
You're inviting attorney Willison.
And I'm inviting attorney Willis in, so I'm going to ask everyone to please leave the room.
It will continue after.
Yes. Okay.
Motion then that we come out of executive session. At 7:15 PM, there were no notes taken or...
No votes taken, no decisions made.
Or decisions made.
So moved.
So moved by Jake Barr, seconded by Mary Jo Knowles, all in favor. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. Out of executive session.
Everybody like it?
We have to.
Great for me. I'm just gonna bark fun when it's done.
It's done so well.
Oh.
Robert said if he falls, can he come down if you just wanted him for any questions?
Well, probably be helpful if you want to. Did you have a...
Said you would need to call.
I have, I don't have his number handy. Do you have his number handy?
I do.
Okay.
Eight six zero.
Mm-hmm.
Six six two. One three three nine.
Okay.
You're popular, right?
You know, yeah, I haven't used this for a while, so catch us up if it's on.
Um, sure, I'm gonna get your attention and those other people stop by. But we're going to ask first. Thanks.
Okay. Yes, you, you know, I normally just wanna call him to Dave Robert so that Dave Robert is on his way here. He said give him 20 minutes, okay?
Okay.
Because I know you had questions of him last time and he was not present, so I will make sure he's present this time.
Okay.
Okay?
All right, so do we want to...
You want to start your public hearing now and he'll show up when he shows up.
Okay, all right. All right, the next item on the agenda then is a public hearing for Forty McCurdy Road and I will pass it over to Madam Secretary.
Oh, didn't I read all that stuff?
You did, however, because they didn't send notice to the neighbors, the hearing was defective. We had to basically start again from scratch, unfortunately. So I apologize, but...
So zoning commission of the town of Old Lime will hold a public hearing, a regular meeting. Now, this still has the old information on it.
Um, that's true. We, we have republished. Like, I can assure you, we have republished.
So I should change the date when I'm reading it?
Yes, why don't you give it for tonight's date? It has been, it has been republished.
A regular meeting on Monday, November 10th at 6:30 PM, Old Lime, Connecticut, to consider and hear comments on following case number 25-3, Forty McCurdy Road, special permit application to modify original application, Old Lime Country Club applicant. At this hearing, interested parties may be heard and written communications received. Copies of the application are in the land use office, 52 Lime Street, Old Lime, Connecticut, dated at Old Lime, Connecticut, this 30th day of whatever it was, 2025.
Okay.
So, and we have exhibits, A is the application, B are the plans, C emails from Matt Blazer dated 8/27/25. Exhibit D, Richard M. Osley, resume. Exhibit E, legal ad. Exhibit F, certification of decision granted by Old Lime Zoning Commission, recorded 6/13/25. Exhibit G, addenda, Agenda, Old Lime Zoning Commission, 10/14/25. Exhibit H, legal ad. Exhibit H, legal ad, and exhibit I certificate of mailings.
Right. Thank you. All right. So before I ask the applicants to come up. Um, long question here. Is there any member of the general public? That is at this meeting. That for this hearing, this public hearing, that was not here. For last month's meeting. And is here specifically to hear the application. For the uh, country club modifications. Okay. So there are no additional. Uh, members of the public here. Is there any? One in the audience today? That would care to make a comment on this application once I open it up to public hearing. Okay, known that way. Okay, so then I will ask the applicants um. To once again provide us. This time. With a very brief. Um. Overview. Of exactly what this special application permit is for. Dude, please come up.
We need to catch you on the other table.
Identify yourself and.
Um, everybody, my name is Matthew Glazer with Newfield Construction Group. We are the construction manager for the Old Line Country Club project at forty Currie Road. In Ohio. Uh, what we're looking for is the ability to. Modify the original application to allow for blasting, um, as we presented previously on micro blasting. Uh, micro blasting will be designed. Uh, to protect the most. The closest structure adjacent to where blasting. An example of that would be. If we were, if we're blasting at the country club, it's designed by engineers to not impact. The country club. So anything away from that, as you farther, you're uh, isn't, is not. In direct, it's um. Danger of blasting. The uh, micro blasting that we reviewed last time. Um, I just want to read a couple of hit it slides.
Please.
The explanation of blasting. Why is blasting necessary? Control blasting is used daily throughout the world. It is the most cost effective method available for breaking rock. Which helps lower the cost to homeowners, taxpayers, businesses, and contractors. Rock excavation by blasting takes a fraction of the time required by conventional earth movie equipment, reducing the time required for construction. And disturbance to you. In most cases, it is impossible to excavate without blasting. So what we're trying to avoid here for the neighbors and for the community is blasting is is a very quick application. Um, there's three whistles that are blown before we blast. We do seismograph tests. Uh, we track the readings of everything around us. Um, and it's a quick boom, very soft. If we're doing, removing the rock by using a machine which is called whole ramming. It becomes very loud and invasive and takes a lot of time and can disturb the surrounding area with noise pollution. Um, what is involved? Blasting is designed to remove rock only where engineers specifications required. The pre-bast blast plan will establish procedures to maintain vibration limits. Below the damage thresholds of adjacent structures. The first step is to drill a pattern of cylindrical holes which are loaded with explosives and crushed stone. The holes are connected to delays. Which cause each hole to go off milliseconds apart. Consequently, a large blast can reduce to a series of small blasts. Heavy blasting mats are seen and can be placed over the holes to keep debris down. Uh, like I said, uh, previously said, three long whistles are blown prior to each blast. The way that it was described to me that made me understand it was like a perforated piece of paper. And you drill the holes. Get blast in there and pull it away. It comes off and then we can remove the the stone with the. Next year. Uh, the blast design during blast operations, attention must be given to heave excavation limits relative to overfracture and ground control flyrock air blasted vibration as well as fragmentation. I have you actual distances. In here as well. They let you know how far the country clubs blasting is to the the closest neighbors. So I can get that. See it as well. Uh, these are the examples that we uh, went through last time.
We should keep a copy of that presentation in the sounding office because it's very informative.
And I can forward you the actual. Uh, digital copy of the telephone function. Okay, got it. The um. The country club itself. Where we blasting for the addition is a hundred and sixty five feet to the cemetery. That's along Johnny K Hill Road. It is three hundred and fifty six feet to the closest neighbor. Uh, from the country club distance, there is also additional blasting up at the parking lot area. Which is adjacent to Johnny K Hill Road and the neighbors uh, up in that area are four hundred and seventy feet. And four hundred and forty four set, four hundred and forty seven feet away from the blasting area. So quite a distance away from where we actually perform this work. Blasting, uh, how blasting may affect your house. The proximity of existing structures is considered when designing blast. Most of the explosive energy will be consumed by rock fracture or will be reduced by destructive interference. Lower levels of energy will continue to travel as seismic and sound waves. Energy allowed to travel on the work site is wasted energy and causes one to build vibrations. Uncontrollable factors such as geology and weather make it impossible to avoid excess vibration noise. Although the vibrations come from constructive blastings will be perceptible, the vibrations will not be sufficient to manage structures or building materials as verified, verified by seismic. And we do have a blast plan guidelines that we filed, all that was presented. As well last time, so this will be included in your presentation for everybody to go through. I believe, you know, one of the things that we we mentioned, when we get ready to blast, we'll send out letters again to the neighbors so they're aware it's going to happen. So if somebody has a dog that is distracted, concerned about blasting. Or any children outside playing, they can bring inside their social issues.
How how long before you begin blasting will you notify the neighbors?
I would say a week. You do a week, a week.
Are you going to go out with some sort of a notification? Uh, prior to that indicating that? There will be blasting?
We can do that. Yeah, same same way as how we notify neighbors of this meeting this evening. We have that same mailing list.
But that notification did not indicate. That this application was for blasting.
No, it did, it.
Right, so so concern I have is. Can the neighbors be brought up to speed? Now. To let them know this is happening and approximately when they can expect.
Yeah, we can send that out.
And in the process that you just indicated is the how it'll.
The guidelines.
The guidelines.
Yep.
Will the neighbors have uh, access either by default or as an opt into seismic monitoring and pre and post surveys?
The the results will have from the seismograph test, will they have access to it? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, and 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 pre and post surveys if if um. If that's indicated.
For. For their actual homes. Surveys. Um. I'd have to get back to you on that. That one off the top of my head. I know for all the areas around here, we have, we have a budget for that. Um, if it includes their homes, I'd have to double check, but.
Okay, clarify. What do you mean by survey? What are you looking forward? What kind of survey?
Question.
I mean, based on what we heard last time, there will be sort of real time monitoring of. Vibrations and such certain distances. I don't know if it's specific to houses, I don't think it is, but at certain locations. There are real time monitorings that information will be translated instantly to Dave Robert, who will be showing up shortly. He can talk to you about that. Uh, I don't know if it's also available instantaneously to neighbors, but my understanding is those reports are public information and can be FOIA to 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 people considering.
And our seismograph will keep track of all the vibration in the area when we're blasting. And those reports would be available to everybody.
And I, in our minutes from last month, we have a preconstruction survey will be given to the Old Lime Country Club and the owners of the adjacent structures.
Like a questionnaire, a survey? Is that what you?
Independent and seismic graphs, where I said, on a pre blast survey will be given to the local and state fire marshal, which we just said. I don't know. We didn't get a, we didn't get a copy and I know Denise.
It's not that.
Yeah, I know that. So I'm trying to clarify what kind of surveys specifically you're seeking.
Blast survey is usually done by the blasting company and what they're doing is they're trying to determine existing conditions first.
And they're looking at the geology.
They just want to make sure that if there's already a crack in the foundation, that they're not held responsible for it. So they do a pre blast survey, so they do go to the houses. Anything within a the area that might have.
Yeah, within, I mean, they're going to be looking at a certain, they're going to be looking at what they described as critical areas, so they're going to decide. Within the blast sites, how much blasting, what are the critical areas that they need to protect? And outside of that, so whether they look at. Foundations that are four hundred or five hundred feet away, they may not. If it was something that was in that critical area, that's where they're probably going to do the same.
Guess that's the seismograph report, right? So they determine if that blast was really strong outside of that footprint, right?
That's what they're looking at. They got a huge recall and testify last time that they do some pre blast, smaller blast as well. And then they see, and then they see how far that goes out.
And we would, for our pre blast surveys, you know, for just for the country club, for example, they would want it done on their pool. Just where we're blasting. They would want to know, we need to do it at the at the graveyard because there is a wall that's outside the graveyard, a pre blast survey there. When you get up to the houses that are that are four hundred. Feet away, but. You know, it's the kind of outside of your. Your blast radius at that point.
Eric, do you have um? Our approval from last time?
It's in the minutes. So all all the stuff is in the minutes. Yeah, the specific conditions of approval were specifically written ready to the minutes you would have them. And I had an extra copies of the minutes if you'd like, more extra Jane or Jane's box.
Other questions from? Anyone on the commission? I'll take that as a note.
Okay, and again, I did request Mr. Robert show up, so if you want to wait a couple of minutes and yeah, for him to show up. I had to call him back now and say turn around and go back the other way.
Well, yeah, no, we don't want that.
Have a seat.
Thank you.
So then I will open it up the public hearing, even though I think I know the answer to this one. Um, is there anyone in the audience um, in the room? That um. Would like. To comment. Or make a comment on this application. I could wait for ten minutes.
Well, we we can also do is essentially table this for now, move to the coastal site plan application, then come back to this when it's when it's repaired.
So I'm assuming there's no one here uh, for that. So we will then table. I'll take a motion. That we tabled. This. Um, application until we hear from our fire marshal who was on route. So moved by uh, Denise Savage out for um, a motion to table second.
Second.
Second by Jane Marsh. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Abstain. And deny. Okay. All right, next item. Coastal site plan. And then twelve, ten and twelve dash one West End Drive. I guess you don't have anything on this.
Um, we should have it as a coastal site plan. Yeah, this is an act, this is an active application. It can't be acted upon tonight because we just sent it over to deep for their comments. They had thirty five days to get back to us.
Okay.
So even though it's a site plan, doesn't require a public hearing, it does theoretically come in as as a um. Site plan application, so we should, we should introduce it tonight as a as an active application.
Thanks. This is file. These are the applications. I'm gonna hand them, hand them out.
You, the only thing free full sets in the application here, so we bring a set down here for people to look at. Yeah, copy this.
One another set of plans.
No, you're the new doctor. Yes. Thank you very much. Nice to meet you. Thanks.
All right. Good evening. Thank you. My name is Tim. My name is Tim DeBarfolo Mayo uh, with Daco. Um, if you. Had Daco before you in the past. Um, I am the new face, uh. New owner of Daco, uh, recent, as of recent. And uh, so I just want to introduce myself. We have. An office in the original office, um, original company, Sound Engineering Associates is in Fairfield. We have our mystic office that remains open and staffed. So I am traveling back and forth on a regular basis, so. Uh, nice to meet you all, and I will just briefly go through this. This application. Is a replacement of an existing wall. Um, on the beach in Foxness. The uh, beach neighborhood on the Florida, on the on the sound side. Um. The um, with 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 some minor modifications. Um. What's currently on site? Is in. Uh, a Gabian style wall and a Gabian wall, if you're not familiar with that. Is a wire cage filled with stone. You may have seen these along the highway. Okay, and uh, some uh, some years ago. Less than ten years ago, I believe. Um. The Gabian wall was installed, approved and installed. At this location. Uh, primarily because uh. This area um, is very susceptible. It's location along the beach, its location. Uh, relative, it's immediately adjacent to a timber groin. It's susceptible to periodic erosion and accretion of sand. It's a very dynamic area. Sand comes and goes. Uh, so there's two houses in particular that this, that the existing Gabian wall. Protects, and it protects the the dwellings from the foundations from being undermined. Uh, should a storm or natural beach erosion occur. Okay. So. What had happened is these walls, the existing Gabian walls are not very old. Uh, they're not meant for. Marine. Exposure. These structures do not last long. They're, all they are are wire. Uh, wire met, wire cage. And they. Deteriorate quickly in the saltwater environment. So uh, they were installed, unfortunately, and they are starting to open up. So. Hmm. The proposal here is to replace these walls essentially in kind. And I'll explain the two minor modifications. Essentially in kind with a more durable concrete. And the way we're going to do this, and the reason, one of the reasons why they use the Gabian wall is actually very practical. Is that you're able to. Build these offsite and settle. And and you can set them in the wet. You don't have to worry about de-watering. It's not a lot of site disturbance and as a result. So. They're, they're very practical. Um, but not in this case. So what we've come up with is a very similar situation where we're going to use concrete, but we're going to use precast concrete. So we're gonna. Uh, if, yeah, on the second page, there's a, there's actually a section through. It shows, you can see the um. Existing condition versus the proposed condition. And what we're going to do is we're going to have precast concrete. Block. Serve as the puddings. And then the contractor will have the option to use precast. Stems. Wall stem or cast in place. The precast pudding is the key because that sets you at grade, levels you off and gets you essentially out of the water. So the construction, uh, other than that, the geometry is essentially the wall height doesn't change. What's there now? The top of the wall is at elevation six. Existing, the top of the proposed wall, elevation six, existing, uh, proposed. So none of, none of that changes. The the real work is the excavation, removal of the cages. And replacement of and 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 prepping the site to put the, put the wall back in, replacement wall back in. Um. The two minor modifications is. Um, one of the homeowners requested that we incorporate some steps. Into the wall, so when, when the beach does. Lose some sand, he has. Easy access onto the beach. Into the wall, so when, when the beach does lose some sand, he has easy access onto the beach. Um, so we've incorporated that. The second modification is uh, an additional ten feet of wall added to the entire structure. And that is, if you can see, if I may borrow this, you can see right here, this wall stops a little short of the property line. Stops about ten feet short of the property line, so this, this homeowner here would like to extend it right up to the property also. Um, essentially. Other than that, they're the same structure, uh, they perform the same function. Uh, however, this will be durable, uh, can last, um, so I'm hoping for questions if you have any.
Will, will the steps offer a place for the water to go? Wasn't there?
So the top of the steps are gonna be at the top of, same as the top of the wall. So the, and if there is any water can, can ride up the steps, it won't, it go any further than the top, than the top of the steps. So it will be, because what will happen is, in order to make these steps, you have to, the wall has to actually turn in. And then the steps come up, so you're still at elevation six, those three sides, so it, it's, it's a little bit.
So the steps built outside of the wall, like in addition to the wall, like?
Like a little pocket, so, little pocket into the wall.
But, so I, I, coincidentally, I, I walked this site, not the whole shoreline, they're looking for arrowheads like on a regular basis. So I'm always staring at those specifically which ones you're talking about, right, and there's times I see them where they're fully exposed, there's times I see them where they're covered with sand.
Yes.
And most recently, they were like extremely exposed due to the storm that we had gotten, that accumulated dirt on the other side, right? So they were looking very exposed as of last week when I was hunting. And um, but my question is, is how far deep is the new wall, uh, you're saying it's?
So it's a little bit deeper.
Because I hope it is, because the way I'm seeing the scouring is, is that it, that, the wall's gonna undermine pretty quickly.
Right, right, from, based on the drawings, based on the drawings from the old, from the old permit. Um, it, we're, we're showing it relatively to scale here, I don't necessarily have an elevation here, but it looks like it's about elevation, let's just. It, it looks like it's about elevation between one and two, and we're setting, we're setting this down at elevation. We're setting this down at elevation minus one, another two feet further. Okay, so we are, we did take that into consideration.
Yeah, is that enough? Is that enough? Cause like?
It's, well. There becomes a practi, there becomes a practical limit, be, between the cost and the, you know, what you're actually building. You know, and, and at some point here, are you really building up? You know, we, we wanna stay, we're a little bit into the wet, even at minus one, so de-watering.
Are you having to get a C O P to do that?
Right now, this site is um.
It's outside the coastal jurisdiction line, yeah, okay.
So, so here we are, if we have to go and get a C O P at some point for this work, then.
Well, you're still getting the coastal site plan review from Deep anyway, so.
Exactly, I, I don't, it's gonna, it's the same, well, it's.
It's different, but I understand.
We may have to go through that approval process, but I'm not really, I'm hoping that we don't, um, and uh, but if we do, we will.
Yeah, well, I mean, it's, you have Brown's too, but it's, it's a C O P, it's now, new structure's still in dredge.
And we've already got a, we've already got a Connecticut D E P permit for it.
Correct.
So we don't see a problem uh, with replacing it, so I would really just call this. Aside from the two modifications I mentioned, a really replacement in kind with a more durable structure.
So, so I have a, my knowledge level of hydraulics is minimal at the best. And uh, so there's gonna be a six-foot wall, and in a velocity wave. That hits, in theory, a velocity wave could hit and then spray up.
Yes.
If a velocity wave is coming in at the six-foot level, or five-foot level, let's say. Aren't those stairs gonna have a direct channel up to bring directly water?
They could, but just keep in mind that that's, when you are talking about what's happening at elevation six, it's not, it's not a significant event enough. For when waves are happening at that low elevation, because we are in a V E.
Do you are, yeah, that's.
We are in a V E, I, I don't recall, off the top of my head, yes, but it's, it's, uh, it, my guess is, I think it's eleven or twelve, something like that. It's a V E twelve, okay, so it's a V E twelve here, so this whole neighborhood is underwater during that event, okay, but even smaller events.
Yeah.
Might as well take.
It's like the high tide, king tide, that's like.
Yes, so, but that, that can, can, can easily, can easily happen, okay? Um, the, the site is relatively flat. Um, there are areas, I mean, this is really a, a bit of a, uh, the, either side of the property, neither of them have these walls. So, so we don't, we don't, yeah, we don't see the water really impacting, anything that comes up through that small area impact. Which is also the same reason why I don't think extending the wall ten feet is really gonna make a difference to any, really anything out there.
So can you just explain then again, why you're going with the solid concrete versus? I mean, I, I know you said the marine.
Well, there's, there's many, right, there's many, there's many materials, there's many materials we can use.
Yeah.
Right, so the Gabian walls are clearly not marine structure. Um, and. So you can use, we can use stone, we can use concrete. Use timber. Um, we can use steel.
Yep.
Right, each one is a different kind of structure, each one has its own um. Kind of design associated with it, right, so I, I'm a structural engineer by trade, by practice. The concrete was chosen, it's a low lime structure. But it is going to be the least costly installation. And the ability for us to be able to cast the footings in blocks, either off-site or in the yard. Make, make it very practical, because it becomes very much like the cages that they use. So you, they, they cast the blocks with key, with keyholes, they pick them up, drop them in, and then they can. Put up formwork at a little higher elevation and stay out of the tide. So it becomes a very practical solution, that's, that's essentially why we chose that. Performance-wise, it's not gonna perform any different than the new Gabian wall did, because there is that. When that way Gabian wall was installed new, it is essentially a solid.
Okay.
Structure.
Yeah.
It does not really offer, it doesn't, it's, it's loose stone inside a cage, but it doesn't offer the kind of went wave. Absorption that a. An armored shoreline would offer.
Okay, no, that's fair.
So it's, it's a pack, they're packed stones in a Gabian cage, they, they behave like a solid structure, so.
And the stones are leaking out of that structure.
They are, they are, and, and the concern is, you know, cleaning up all, you know, more to come out of it, it's just a mess. To clean up those stones.
Yeah.
The idea is gonna be, you know, how making sure that we, we, we capture all of those.
I, I thought, again, I am not a structural engineer, but I thought the reason for a Gabian wall was to actually allow the pressure from the water to. Uh, go through.
Well, that's, it does, it does, but that's in a different sense.
Okay.
So, so what it does is, the Gabian structure is a permeable structure. So if you're using it, let's say not in a marine environment, you're using it on a regular upland environment, and you have rain, you have groundwater. And you have, it will not allow hydrostatic pressure to build up behind it.
So if you have a retaining wall, it's holding the land back.
So a regular retaining wall, you would see. You don't, yes, you don't, so you don't have to worry about that in a Gabian wall, because the water passes right through.
Yeah.
But passes right through in a hydrostatic condition. When the wave is hitting it, it's, it, some water's gonna pass, obviously pass through it, but it's.
So it's just a good theory, it does, in, in, in this particular location, it's not.
Doing what?
Yeah.
It's not absorbing the wave energy.
Yeah.
It does not do that, all right, so, this is in all sense an erosion control structure. As it has been previously authorized, so, um, it, the idea is for it to hold the material behind it. Uh, and we're just trying to replace it as in kind as possible when, in a more practical way.
So looking at that.
You'll actually see those on highways.
Difference from the, from the landslide and from stormwater.
Yes.
How's the, you know, less permeable concrete wall gonna?
Well, so we're in the beach, we're in a beach environment, so there's beach sand in front of the wall, there's also beach sand all behind the wall, all the houses are in the. So any water that is in the upland side of there is going to drain out immediately, there's really not.
Drain down.
Yeah, there's really not a condition. It's gonna be the most permeable.
Right.
Medium we're running into here, so I don't see it as an issue, and the footings are blocks, they're individual blocks, they're never going to be. You know, we're gonna put them together, but they're not, there's gonna be joints in between them, and those joints are gonna allow water to pass through.
Hmm.
So it's permeable.
In, in that sense, yeah.
Eric, I, just out of curiosity, is there any scenario in which, for a, a situation like this? We would want to seek input from our colleagues on the flood and erosion board?
Flood erosion board, um, I hadn't considered that, we certainly could, um. Again, we're sending this to Deep, because it's a mandatory, before, we've sent it to the engineer.
Not that, yeah.
I, I had not considered that, we ask you back next month anyway, so if you'd like me to send it over to flood erosion control, I'm happy to.
And, and I know that they're not gonna necessarily, you know, they're not gonna override anything that Deep is saying, but also just for their general awareness. As they're looking at a lot of these issues along the entire coastline.
Okay.
I, I think it could be informative.
I'm happy to send it along to them, I had not considered that, I, I'm happy to, to do that between now and next meeting.
Eric, I just have a question about the extension of the wall, are there any aside yard setbacks we need to be concerned about?
Given the height of the wall, it doesn't reach the, the structural requirement for our purposes there, so I think we're okay with that, but I'll double check to make sure that we're not.
Double check on that.
Um, if, if it's less than.
As the height, I'm not as concerned, I'm, I'm thinking more, you know, it's height and width, but it's a side yard setback for a struc.
Okay, well, let me go look, look at that, we have specific rules for retaining walls that are slightly different, so I'll go check retaining wall versus what our setback requirements are.
Yeah, because that's one thing, you know, a lot of times when you put a retaining wall aside of someone else's property, all of a sudden their property is just there, so.
Does anything land, uh, go into the water, uh, associated with this project, same thing?
You know, no, we, well, we're excavating.
Yeah.
So the work, the work concludes, the last page shows a site, um, site utilization plan. And so stop where our stockpile area is, where excavation area is.
They have to keep their work out of the water jurisdiction unless they get a deep permit.
Yeah, yeah, we, so we're, we, we actually designed this. When we had the survey done, and we saw that the, the coastal jurisdiction line was, was way out, so let's design this so we stay. All of the equipment, materials, silt fence, everything stays landward of the C J L, we just don't wanna cross that line.
Which is good, because it makes it exclusively in your jurisdiction.
So that's what we do, so this, this shows that we're doing, we're having a stockpile in there, in, in, under front yard over here by the road. And they're gonna be accessing in between the two dwellings, um, and there is one other item that I need to. Address, um. Which may be something you might, you folks will consider, uh, this wall, existing wall. Extends into the neighboring property currently at number fourteen. It was authorized like that, it's built like that now. Uh, we're gonna replace it like that. The, that's, this owner, uh, Tim DeVivo has, uh, had, has. Is providing a letter of, of support for this, he has no problem with it, he believes that, he believes that omitting this would be a mistake. Okay, because it would create a channel.
Like that ties back into the.
It goes right into, it goes right into the jetty, right into the jetty here, it needs to do that.
Okay, except you've now said something, triggered something on my end.
Fine, that's why I said it, because if it does, it does.
Amend your application to include that property.
Because can we have, can we simply have a letter authorizing them to perform the work on his property?
That's great, however, the application itself needs to include that number.
Okay.
Because that number is one of the properties affected by this work. So I'm okay with the letter of support, that's great, but you also physically need to amend the application to include all three properties where the work is being conducted.
Fair enough, fair enough, absolutely, happy to do that, okay, that's not, that's not a problem.
Not a big deal, but I just, again, to be technically complete application, you need to include every property that is, yeah, again, the letter for him indicates. He's signing the application, because you need him to sign the application.
We're, we're great, well, that's why I brought it up, I wanted to make sure we didn't, we didn't, uh, miss, miss that, because I knew that that could be a touch, a touchy issue. Um, but those are all, those are essentially all the issues, and I'm, I have, you have any more questions? I guess, I guess I'll be here next month.
It's helpful, because it's good to take the time to go through it, so.
Yeah, for us, yes, I, that's exactly, so I really, really appreciate Eric's ability to get us on the agenda, so thank you, because this was a very short. Um, request, and you were able to, to do that, so thank you very much.
I, I will admit, I have not had a chance to do a detailed review of it, it just came in early last week, I was out sick Thursday, Friday. But I wanted to get, to start the D E P clock rolling, so.
Yeah.
You don't need all thirty-five of those days.
Yes, they will.
Again, so that's.
They will, they will.
So again, the goal is to have their review for December eighth meeting, okay?
Hey, hey, can I just ask some, a question of process only, because some towns are, a lot of, I'd work in a lot of towns. So, I don't know what the process is here, um. If the Connecticut comes back and says they want us to file a C O P. Can you issue an approval conditionally?
I, I believe we can, yeah, that, because they're totally separate jurisdictions at that point in time, so we give our jurisdiction, we will tell you, go and get. You know, and whether we say it or not, still need to do it.
Yeah.
So I think, you know, I, I, I don't know that we're conditioning it based on a C O P, there, you, you're gonna need to do it anyway. So it, it's, we, we, we'll act on our piece, they'll act on their piece.
Okay.
And so you have both pieces together, you're not going in.
All right.
Yes.
Yeah, because you won't need our approval in order to get deep approval.
Not, no, but.
You'll need it.
All right, good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Click back the, the pieces.
All right, this was once said here. That's my one.
Yeah, that's. That's existing, this is, I say, so let's go back and put this back to where it was.
That makes more sense, it's fourteen.
You have what's copied it up?
On his card for that?
Okay, so, here we go, this is gonna go back with that. Okay, so now we're going to resume the public hearings, I believe, fire marshal available here?
Yes, we're ready to answer.
Well, yeah, you guys have anything to say, we're not resuming the public hearing?
Okay. Mr. Fire Marshal, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening, good evening.
How can I help you?
We, um, we're here, so, with an application from the country club. It's, it's an application that we're supplementing, because in the initial application to do the modifications. It said, provided that there was no blasting. Um, so the application now is to come back, because there has to be some controlled microblasting. That occurs in certain areas of the site, I think part of it was the parking lot. So there's three areas, I guess, that have to be done, so, um. We just want to, I think the commission just wants. Your insight as to how you end up controlling the blasting on this project. Or where your, where your expertise and where does your jurisdiction come in?
All right, first off, uh, everything you've seen on T V about blasting and pulling up rock, throw it away, because it's all theatrics. What they have up there, if you've ever been to the country club, that's a very tall pile of rock. I believe it's granite or another seriously hard material. When they applied their original uh, permit, there was a possibility of small areas of. Rock being have to be excavated for, in the parking area for the expansion of the building. Consequently, after that, and we're during that time when they applied for their original approval, they did not feel that they had to. Um, I'll put, do blasting at that time, because they thought it was a small amount, and correct me if I'm wrong. Okay. Uh, Matt Glazer from, I believe, what, Newfield?
Yes.
Uh. Consequently, it finds out that there's a larger amount of rock that has to be removed. Uh, to accomplish the permit, the application that you already approved, and putting on the addition. The. Understand that you had a conversation with, uh, one of the Connecticut Blasters from Connecticut Explosives, came in and gave you a. Somewhat of a presentation on how micro. Somewhat of a presentation on how micro blasting works.
A good presentation.
Basically, on my side, I can tell you how the permitting process goes. Not everybody could buy, transport, or use. Uh, explosive materials in the state of Connecticut. It's very highly regulated. It's regulated at state level and it's again regulated at federal level. When a. Blaster gets involved in a construction project to minimize or reduce. The density of rock for whatever reason on a site. They do a lot of pre. Blast, uh, operations such as one, taking a look at the topography. Figuring out the geology area of it, finding out what the conse- the, uh. Materials are. And then they determine with the cert- with the, uh. Architect and the construction managers on what areas that they need to, they would like to have broken up. For lack of a better word. At that point in time, they go back, they have a site. Application or a site map that have a geo- a geographical area, what they want to do. They also have the information of how deep. The, uh. Contractor wants to go with, uh. Removing rock and then they do mathematical calculation to determine how many holes. Or how many drill holes are going to be needed to break this up, so it's manageable. They also go and calculate out the load capacities or the load capabilities of. Different types of explosive materials and they determine the best explosive material that they want to work with. To accomplish this task. And then they do additional calculations on determining what the. Timing would be between, say they drilled twelve holes. In an area the size of this table and they wanted to go down eight feet. This is all hypothetical, but it's an example. So they calculate how many holes they have to drill, how far they're apart, what angle they're at, which way do they want to fract the rock? Uh, and then doing all that mathematical calculation, they're able to determine which material they're going to use. It'll give them the. Quote unquote, best bang for the buck. Or the most cost effective way. And then they apply for the permit. Now, no blasting in state of Connecticut can go on without local fire marshals approval. And the state statutes and the requirements at state level require that nobody can transport, use, transport or purchase. Explosive materials without a federal and a state license. State statutes and state requirements state that on any property, on any structure. Uh, anything within a three hundred foot. Area. Between of the blasting location. Any, uh, butters or adjacent property owners, they have to be formally notified.
How many feet was that?
So and we also.
A second, what was the, the closest, the butter? They're all over, they're all over three hundred? Okay.
So looking at that, they're not. Uh, bound by the requirements to notify. In a butter because they're outside just there. Because they. Also, when I issue a blasting permit, I verify their license, I verify their insurance, I verify their. Uh, vehicle that they're transporting. Materials with, they give me an accurate count of how many blasting, how many blasting caps and how many. Uh, pounds of material that they're going to be using. I can request and look at a blasting pattern to see how many holes, what the holes, what the hole, what the depth and the angles of the holes are. And review that. I require them to have seismic monitoring at the edge of the blasting site and again at the property line. Because that will give you a realistic sound wave trans- uh, transition from the point of detonation to. The farthest par- parcel or farthest decision, but. Distance of the property before it jumps into a, either a pot town land or a. Another private property. Uh, and then I get, uh, I issue them the permit. We issue the permit for thirty days only. They do it in thirty day cycles. Uh, trying to expedite this. Blasting contractors are in state. They usually come in. When they apply for a permit, uh, give them the permit and then they usually come in with a drill rig or an auger drill. To start punching holes in the rock to start preparing their patterns. But everything that, before they get the permit issued, everything is basically on paper. There's no real activities other than possibly bringing in their equipment and staging their equipment beforehand. Once they get the permit, then they're able to drill. Order the material, deliver the material. And shoot the material. And on the day of the shoot, require and let me know when they're doing it. I will come out sometimes. Depending upon the proximity or the, uh, size that it lasts. Uh, I'll come out and witness the first shot or two. And what I'm looking for is finding, making sure that they. Have licensed personnel on the scene working the explosives at the time, making sure the registration of the vehicle is still current, sense of. Issuing the permit. Making sure that, uh, adjacent. Our seismic monitoring is set up at the blast site at that three hundred foot or the adjacent or the end of the property line. And they go from there. One of the, the biggest advantage of. Doing explosive, controlled explosive demolition like this on blasting. Is those are your constituents who, if you know, live down in the Mile Creek area. During the month of August, they had the pleasure of listening to a hydraulic hammer eight hours a day, five days a week for five weeks at the middle. At the Mile Creek School. Because the contractor decided there to break it up with a hammer versus doing explosives. Down there. The advantage of doing blasting, especially on a project like this where it is a very large granite knob up there. Uh, it's quick. It's very efficient. It's minimal disruption. To everybody around and it keeps a project going on a. More even keel. With the Mile Creek project on that was down there, that hammer was there eight hours a day, listening to it. And I know the neighbors, my phone was blowing up too. Literally with, how long is this gonna?
Thank you.
I mean, that was the, what the main reason. We, we really appreciate you coming out because last, last meeting at that point, um. We had been informed that you hadn't weighed in.
I forgot all about that. I wasn't invited to it. Going with Eric, that's like, you know, we work on this stuff every day. When it comes through, I just forgot about putting it on my calendar that night. But I thought I would, looking at this, you know, not trying to weigh a decision or give you an opinion. My professional opinion alone is. They're using skilled contractors, they're following by the license, their safety is any contractor, blasting contractor they use. They haven't contract, they haven't signed with anybody yet pending this approval. The four blasters in the state of Connecticut are all highly qualified to do this work.
Does it concern you that nobody from the public? So you'll get those phone calls then.
The, the drilling is a lot quieter than. You know, putting a. Seventy ton machine up there with a. Hydraulic hammer pounding eight hours a day, letting it echo down.
Everywhere.
Everywhere in here. My personal question is going with Eric is trying to figure out how we got here in the first place. And I think it was more of a. Concern of, of the commission saying, you know, trying to go with the what ifs, but. There's, there's planning and procedures in place to permit this project. I have no problem doing my responsibilities that I have. So. In closing on this, if you don't have any other questions, I strongly recommend that you, uh, give them the opportunity to continue and we'll report back. If you'd like, um. In regards to the planning, I can feed Eric information on the planning or I can come back here and let you know what the results were.
Well, that was one of the conditions of approval last time, if I recall, the, yeah, basically whatever reports you get, you transmit to me, so I can show them to the commission after you get them.
Basically, they got a copy of the permit. And one of the great things about blasters, they're very highly insured. And in the unlikely event that. An adjacent property does get hypothetically damaged. In the beginning, before it, uh, the blasters do, like I said earlier, when the blasters within three hundred feet. Of the work to an adjacent property, they are required to notify the butters. Here we're outside it. One of the things you may. I would, I'm going to suggest because of the concerns of everybody here is to have them go out and do a, uh. Pre-blast survey or at least reach out. You know, even if the property is seven hundred feet away, it's like, hey. Um, from X Y Z blasting, we're going to be doing work up here. Would you like? Your house inspected prior to our work?
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome, sir.
Oh, before, any, any questions from the applicants of us? Okay, good. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, then, does the commission have any more questions? Anyone, anything? Okay. Then I will, uh, ask for a motion that we close the public hearing for the, um. So moved, okay. Is there a second? Second, I got two, I couldn't get a little faster. All right, we'll give it to Mary Guy. So, uh, for the, there was a motion to close the public hearing by Denise Savage Joe and seconded by Mary, um. That could, whatever, it's too many, there's too many, like, you know.
Watching you try and figure it out.
I know, exactly. Uh, all in favor. Opposed, abstain? All right, the public hearing is closed. So then we will go into the next agenda item, which is.
Says you gotta. Do we have to?
I'm wanting to show my friend, not you. Okay. So. Oh, we're going to go back to this one. Okay, the regular meetings. All right. So. Is there any discussion on the application, uh, brought before the commission? From the, um, country club.
Again, you still have the three conditions from last time, as I recall.
Right, I was gonna, I was gonna, I think Denise has them up, right? Okay. So then. I will take a motion. Entertain a motion. To. Approve the application as. With conditions as noted in, from the October. Tenth. Meeting. Which, which there were three conditions. When October when?
Fourteen.
October fourteenth, to which there were three conditions and I believe now we're adding. An additional? Or are we set with those three?
Let's repeat them, but I, I don't think there's an additional one, but I think we're, I think.
All right, let's, let's do it this way. I will take a motion then. To, um, approve the application. For the. Country club as. As we did last month with the three conditions.
Which we, let's just read them out so everybody's aware of what those conditions are.
Yeah, the three conditions are, um, first one, limit micro blasting to three areas shown on the plan. The second one is the micro blasting guidelines as completed be submitted to the zoning officer. Uh, prior to blasting taking place. And three, the blasting seismic monitoring reports will be added to the fi- uh, filed post blasting.
Okay.
And I'll ma- and I'll make a motion to approve with those conditions.
Did we, did we want to put then the pre-survey piece in there?
They're outside of it.
They're gonna, I believe they're gonna do that as a courtesy. But.
We don't have to put it as a condition.
Legally, they're outside of the, uh, the boundary.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. Understood where it landed.
So then there's a motion then to approve with those three conditions.
He's made the motion.
He says made the motion. Is there any discussion?
You second.
Oh, second first. Second by Mary Jo Nozal.
That you're in discussion again. One, you're limit, remember it's a construction site. You're limiting them to. What did you just say, three?
The three locations shown on the map that they've given us. So.
In the event that they would stay within those parameters and they find out after a expl- uh. Doing the activities in excavation, they have to go farther. Do they have to come back again?
It's an, it's the area where we know they're blasting. It's not. It's about like, we have to take the bedrock out here, so how they, how they have to take that out. So it's more a geographic location.
So their, but their application is for three areas and three areas only, correct? So if they have to move to a fourth area.
Or if it expands beyond the area shown on the map. I would say it's coming back at least to me for determination whether this is a minor modification or whether this is. Change. If it's a minor modification, I, I'm not going to send them back here for a new approval. If it turns out that they need to blast a whole new section of rock, then I probably am going to send them back here at that point in time.
As long as they continue to do their activities within their defined areas.
Defined areas, yes.
They, they, they've drawn basically circles on the map saying we're working in these three areas. As long as they're within those three areas, that they're good to go.
And I would say if there's any hiccups. Like. Oh, boy. Then they come back to Eric. And Eric makes the determination whether it's minor or major. Yes, please. Okay, thank you. So we have a. Motion, we have a second. Is there any additional discussion? Okay, then all in favor of the motion as presented? Opposed? Abstain? Okay, then the application, um, as re-reviewed is approved five zero zero. Thank you. Okay, we have. The next item is to receive and set the public hearing. For. Special permit in coastal site plan ninety six Lime Street. Renovation and expansion of the Crebel Gallery. And associated site improvements. Florence Griswold Museum is at. Did we?
One of the sets down, I'm about to have you go through any kind of things tonight, but at least I wanted you to see what I have multiple copies of upstairs, so.
Okay.
Huge plans.
So, uh, I'm Pete Steer, the interim director for the museum. This is Noel Murphy, uh, who works with, uh, who's L O, who's our architect. And so this is, uh, an expansion that the museum has been considering for several years. Um, finally coming to the point where we have drawings and some money and. The opportunity to sort of take advantage of a opportunity to grow the, the business. Um, and sort of. Enhance the campus in a way that sort of matches the stature of the museum.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, I don't know how much you want here tonight.
Want to get a quick synopsis or are we ready to? Wait till next month, if we set it for next month.
Wouldn't mind a quick synopsis.
Can we do a quick synopsis?
We can do a quick synopsis. I know you've already been here for a while this evening, but we can keep it brief, uh, just to have five minutes or less.
That would be wonderful.
Um, so I might just.
Let's flip notes, please.
One page of the plan, uh, let's see if I can find. Um, I know you, so I can't see it down at the end of the table. But the, um, if you're familiar with the Florence Griswolds, um, museum property, there, it's a collection of buildings and there's nine buildings in total. On the grounds, kind of the flagship building is the Florence Griswolds House right on Lime Street. Um. Our work is focused on the Crebel Gallery, which is the newest building on the property. Built around two thousand and one. Um, and we're planning to expand the Crebel Gallery building, um, by around five thousand square feet. Um, and that's primarily gallery space. There's also an education center. Um, to kind of expand the programming opportunities at the museum and a new entrance into that existing building. Um, what we're really trying to do, kind of holistically around the site is make the landscape. Uh, kind of the primary, um. Uh, part of the visitor experience more. uh, kind of the primary um, uh, part of the visitor experience, more than any of the buildings specifically. Um, historically, this property was kind of a source for painters that were boarding at the Florence Griswold House. Um, where they would go out and paint um, at the turn of the century. Um, so we want the landscape to be kind of very prominent in the visitor experience right now. When you arrive on the site, there's a giant asphalt driveway that brings you in and really chops up the property and, and the landscape is really secondary. Um, so we propose, and it's a two-phase project. Um, but there'll be, those phases will be built hopefully back to back in short order. But in phase one, adding a new entry drive. Um, so most visitors, when they arrive on Lime Street, can quickly get to parking without having to circulate deeper into the property. That's setting us up for phase two, where we eliminate this driveway entirely and this entire central part of the landscape becomes pedestrian only. Um, and we, we reinvent the, the entry to this building, but phase one is relocating that road and building in addition on the west side, or kind of the riverside of the existing building, which is all gallery space and an education center.
Well, that's where you're eliminating all the impervious with the road and just adding.
Yeah, so all of this goes away, and because this is just a much shorter distance, um, there's a net reduction in um, impervious surface at kind of the full completion of the project. Um, which makes stormwater, you know, easier to manage overall. Um, in, in phase two, all the traffic at this point is rerouted directly into the parking lot. We do have to reconfigure the lots to add certain number of spaces, um, and, and, and make sure there's enough handicap parking in this main lot. The existing driveway gets transformed into something more like a farm lane. That's not meant for everyday vehicular traffic, but can serve um, emergency vehicles. Um, but it would be, um, you know, two kind of cobbled, um, kind of drive aisles. Um, the planted section in between, um, and it's, it's meant to be pedestrian only outside of kind of emergency vehicle access, and there's a gate um, at that point to restrict traffic. Um, so then this whole central area becomes um, pedestrian area, um, there's new plantings, native plantings, walkways, stone walls that start to articulate the edges of that. Um, and then in phase two, we add a new front entrance onto the Crebel Building, and that front entrance. If you know that building now, it's down a series of stairs or kind of a long ramp from parking, we're gonna bring it up. So that it's level um, with kind of the larger landscape, you're not going down into a depression. Um, so it's much easier to access from parking and easier to integrate kind of indoor-outdoor experience. Um, and that's really the theme throughout the project is kind of knitting the indoor-outdoor experience of being in the building linking to views to the landscape and things like that. So that's, I'm probably over time, um, which is a couple of other things that we're, we're doing. We met with the Historic District Commission this morning. Um, they, their jurisdiction is actually quite minor. It's really just kind of this section of the site. Um, you know, a portion of the new driveway, um, but we're seeking, you know, a certificate of appropriateness from them. Um, we've also submitted the same application to the Gateway Conservation Commission. Um, because they have kind of purview of this, given its um, adjacency to the river, Lieutenant River, um, and we're gonna meet with them on, I think it's December sixth is their next meeting. So those are in motion, um, you know, in addition to coming back here next month. So happy to answer questions, but that's.
One, if you, if you have this kind of arrangement, how does fire trucks and stuff like that get to your building?
Yep, so, so this is trafficable by the fire truck. This is something we've talked to um, fire chief about, um, and then in terms of exiting out, there's a section of, probably maybe shows better on a landscape drawing, um. Well, it's actually quite faint, but there's a section of space here that is reinforced turf with what it's called. Um, here it is, it's twenty-four feet wide to accommodate the radius of the truck and get it out back into the paved asphalt area. Um, that's basically a buildup of um, like well-draining, stabilized soil so that it can support the weight of the fire truck. Um, so the fire truck can access the widths and the radii are all um, accommodated here.
It's a good question though, because if, if um, fire truck needed back, access to the back of the building, it doesn't show in this particular drawing, but there's a gate that brings them down to the back.
I was gonna say, I thought they had access in the map too.
That's existing. Yeah, I've seen that, yeah.
So, you know, effectively, when this is all built, there, the, you'll have the same amount of access that you currently have. Just in a, you know, it just, it's more concealed, right, yeah.
What's the current size of the building?
So the current, um, there's actually two kind of conjoined buildings. Uh, there is this building called the Marshfield House, which is where Cafe Flow is, if you've um, ever been there. And, and there's the Crebel Building, um, which are one combined building around twelve thousand square feet currently. Um, maybe it's around that.
That's about right.
I think um, we're adding a kind of a net um, add of five thousand, so about seventeen thousand square feet.
Thanks.
Now, more than half of that is new gallery space, which is um, it's all, there's a lot of collection that's sequestered away in a storage room, um, and some of it off-site. And so it'd be nice to have more opportunities to show that to the public.
Yeah. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Look forward to talking more in a month. Yes, and I'm sure if there's anything that we need to provide in the meantime, Eric will reach out to us.
Yes, you will. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
So I will uh, take a motion that we set the public hearing for the renovation and expansion of the Crebel Gallery for the month of December, December eighth. Is there a motion?
Still moved.
Okay. Second, second by Mary Jo Nozel. The motion was made by Mary Gardner Coppola. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed and abstain? Okay, next month it is. Thank you, gentlemen. You as well.
Wait, what, they flipped it for a reason? Okay.
Approval of minutes, the October fourteenth, a regular meeting, and the October twentieth, special meeting. Motion to approve both by Mary Jo, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Denise. Any discussion? No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Approval of both the minutes for October fourteenth and the twentieth are approved five zero zero. Public comment, Eric, you wanna?
Yeah.
Get this one here?
Yeah. Originally, I was, received, uh, received an email from Mark DeBolt, uh, who wanted to come in and talk about the affordable housing, uh, potential for those two two locations. He has since indicated that he did not want to come to us tonight. He wanted to first start with the Affordable Housing Commission. Um, and then come to us at some point later when he had more definitive answers as to, you know, what he, he was doing there. Um, you did receive a letter from the neighbors, you did receive a response email from Mr. DeBolt, but there is no application pending and no possibility of an application in the immediate future, so we're gonna just put that aside for tonight.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, there's no sort of Z E O comments, and here, so I'm gonna interject briefly. There was another person that came in just today, had asked to be put on the agenda. Um, I talked it over with the chair in light of the fact that I thought Mr. DeBolt was going forward in light of our otherwise very full agenda. Um, I indicated she would be coming forward probably next month. Um, two thirty Shore Road is sort of a business park there that is pretty much empty at the moment. Um, woman's come forward, who's indicated that she wants to go in there. Unfortunately, her use does not meet our regulations at the moment. Um, she runs a for-profit private school, and if you look at your regulations, that you're limiting private schools simply to ones that are nonprofit um, or governmental, um, so not allowed in that location. So she would like to sort of come and say, this is what I do. It's for profit, it doesn't meet your regs. What are your thoughts about potentially changing the regs at some point to accommodate me?
Um, the other piece was medical use?
And we also.
Offices, she wanted to do as well?
Well, no, okay, the, the things that she does are, she has a school for um, autistic or otherwise sort of challenged special ed kids. And then she also does preschool type evaluations for kids who aren't in school yet, so it wouldn't be a doctor's office per se, but it would be sort of evaluation for kids who are not yet.
Tied to the same.
Tied to the same use. Um, but again, she indicated she is not a five oh one C three, she does this for profit. Um, and again, your regs specifically prohibit that use in the C thirty zone, not, but at least it's not the, 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 you, the reg specifically says it has to be a nonprofit use. So she wanted to come in and talk to you about that, um, and again, given timing, I just said, probably not tonight, but she well, it has indicated she's willing to come back in December for that.
What does that do for us if we can't approve it because it's not part of the regulations?
Well, there are sort of two different options. Um, one is you're in the process of amending your regs. At some point, you can say as part of the next round, we're, we'll consider this as part of it. She can always ask for a reg change. Right now, she can file an application for reg change, you can take it up. Um, theoretically, she could ask Z B A for a use variance, however, use variants are pretty much prohibited under our regs. So I can't really see that there would be a reason to grant a variance for that use. Um, it's not like the building has no other viable uses. So um, realistically, either through your own review of your own regulations or through her seeking to amend the regulations, um, she would have to, to, to do some sort of text change. But again, she didn't want to start down that road until she had a sense from you that you would be receptive to hearing that sort of application.
So would the members of the commission like to hear um, what the proposed plan would be or open the discussion here? I don't want to bring her in if it's a, if it's a non-starter.
Well, I guess how is it defined as a school?
Well, let me read you the regs. When, when in doubt, the next, let's read the regs.
Uh-oh, bending and shifting because you're gonna read the leg.
Uh-uh. Okay. Um. So, the, the requirement is philanthropic, educational, recreation, or religious non-residential use by a duly organized nonprofit entity or governmental unit.
Right now, presently in the C.
That, that is C thirty right now.
So we allow now just for only for nonprofits?
Only for nonprofits.
Which a nonprofit is really just.
Okay, so again, what she is saying is, I am not a nonprofit, but this is what I do. Would you consider amending the regs to allow me to do it there? But again, she doesn't want to start the process unless she thinks that this is something you guys would be, would entertain.
Right, so that's, my question is, would we like to hear from her? And consider possibly, or?
I mean, the fact that that's a retail building that's now completely empty because Simpson Healthcare moved out of there. You we're not batting really well over there in retail space for occupancy, right? Like, there's a lot of vacant buildings already over there, so I think that we should seriously consider the ability of a of removing the nonprofit status out of the regulation. I don't know what we have to lose, but I also don't know what we have to gain.
Well, again, it's a special permit use, so even if you were to allow it theoretically, um, you still have to then determine that this is the right use for this location. So you're not this wouldn't be an automatic approval if you allowed it, it was just simply offer her the opportunity to come in with an application.
Under the regulation amendment.
Yeah, uh, uh, it were you to remove the nonprofit requirement, all again, all it would do would be make her eligible to apply for a special permit.
Eric, I, I don't know if it's anything you can answer, but do we understand what the historical reasoning was behind setting this up? So that it was, or I should say Jane. For having, for, for explicitly saying it has to be nonprofit or, or government? I mean, was just this type of educational institution not envisioned at the time, or?
Definitely not envisioned. Um, at the time, the expansion of the concept of um, nonprofits to where they are now, where they look pretty indistinguishable from for-profits, was not anticipated.
Ah, that's a good point of it as well, okay.
And at that point, you had a lot of these sort of shady trade schools that were operating, like I T C, whatever. You, you get a lot of these things that were out there. I think there was a sense that you didn't want those sorts of trade schools setting up here for profit and then scamming people.
But it, but it's, you know, the, the, the former sort of understanding about nonprofits were that they had a certain other standing in your, the social fabric.
Right.
And that they would be um, safer.
It wasn't a tax haven.
Yeah, it was a safer thing, that they weren't gonna do anything they could conceive of to try to make money.
Right.
Um, and so they were a safer thing to allow in, in a um, commercial zone.
I, I think also one of the things for the pre, particularly with the preschool um, you know, we, and daycare, we didn't, we always thought, we, schools were always said they were for education, but you know, preschools and daycare, which, you know, a, a lot of times operate the same thing. They'll do a daycare and, and do the preschool there. Those are, a lot of those are operating as for-profit now, you know. And we never anticipated having that, that real need.
Sounds like this might be something that we would potentially be reconsidering in the regulation.
I would think so, I mean, it's
Well.
To Eric's point, there's, there's been a lot of fraud with, or they will have, you know, with, with for-profits.
But, but what he's saying is that it would still be a special permit, so they'd still have to come in front of us and we could evaluate them.
If you allow it because it is now for-profit, you can't use the fact that you're uncertain about a for-profit enterprise as the reason to turn them down.
The two thirty shore falls within the shoreline gateway, and the shoreline gateway committee has sent out a survey and is actively working on what, what they would like to see happen in that whole district. So whatever we do, I think we should include them in the discussion because they're, that's in there.
But this would open and, uh, to this sort of um, enterprise in any place in the C.
Yeah, it would change your higher C thirty zone in town one.
It's the C thirty zone is pretty narrow as it sits.
Well, but again, Hall's Road is also C thirty.
Yes.
Yes, the, the differences between C thirty and C thirty S are pretty insignificant, so, I mean, you could limit it just to C thirty.
For sure, yeah.
Um, but you know, again, there are, there's C thirty a little bit on Route One. Um, there are sort of places around town, it does pop up. Um, but no, you don't have huge amounts of C thirties throughout the town.
It's been reduced significantly. Especially old lime seafood going out, that now the garden place is gone, so those have been absorbed by residential properties, so we just lost fifteen acres there.
I mean, I think there are some challenges, we need to be cautious, but I think not hearing it because you know, like I said, I think particularly in the preschool sector, you see that a lot, and there's such a need for preschool and um, daycare, so.
And this may be something where I can go back to Francisco Gomes and say, can you give me suggestions for appropriate language of how to incorporate this? Where you, we, we would avoid some of these risks that people are worried about.
Yeah.
Is daycare permitted use right now in the C thirty, or?
Um, well, I don't think it is, let's see, um.
So if, if she came if she came in to us, it would be to just present her business plan? I mean, what would we be? Hearing.
For right now, because it's not permitted by the regs.
Yeah.
She would, I'm not sure I'd give you a business plan, but she would give you sort of nature of what she does.
Yeah.
Because she does this elsewhere, apparently, she would be looking to open up a branch here in our town. And she would say, look, if you think this is a beneficial thing for your town, would you consider a, an amendment to your regulations to allow it in this zone? She, she would then have to go away and file up an amendment to the regs to, to do that. But again, she doesn't want to have to go through that process unless she has a sense that you are potentially gonna go there.
Yeah, I was trying to understand what we would be evaluating when she's in front of us.
Well, she could do two things, right, Eric? I'm not mistaken, she could simultaneously file both applications at the same time, the regulation amendment and the site plan approval at the same time, right?
She, she could, but again.
This person's interest is in, in her business, right, not necessarily looking out after the, the rest of the C thirties.
The challenge is.
I don't mean that negatively, it's just trying to understand.
The challenge is obviously. She, she cares about her business.
Yeah.
Your, your job is the zoning regulations generally.
Yeah.
So you would have to weigh whether you think that changing the regulations generally is a good idea, a bad idea, whatever, and again, all of the issues that you're already talking about regarding. a good idea, a bad idea, whatever. And again, all of the issues that you're already talking about regarding, you know, fraudulent use or whatever else versus daycare, all of those things. Um and it may be, again, that you may be just able to more narrowly tailor a definition for her kind of use without more broadly opening the door to for-profit schools generally. Okay, so we may want to look at listening to what she's saying and then say, would this definition work for your combination of uses? And then go back and say, well, we don't want to allow for-profit schools generally, but for this particular subset, we would be willing to consider it and then have her, yeah, it it yes.
Like a behavioral thing, right? Like it's doing behavioral activities?
Yeah, well, again, I'm not going to try and tell you all of what she's this is why we want to have potentially have her hand to describe it to you. I'm not going to be the best person to describe you.
Understood.
What what she is or is doing, but I I'm sort of giving.
Just quickly, though, you did mention, you know, um that also she was possibly you know, doing some type of therapy work or whatever, and that would be allowed. Don't we have medical office?
You do, yes, but the the because she has the 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 school piece of the puzzle.
The school is part of it.
And that one piece is kind of allowed, but the other piece.
And that's I just want to make sure it's like where it's only the school.
The therapy piece by itself would be okay, but she's sort of leading with the school because that's going to be essentially a five day a week, six hour a day, whatever that piece of the puzzle is. Um and then the therapy piece is sort of as needed appointment basis or whatever else. So I think the the more predominant primary use would be the school type use with this other use again being ancillary to the the primary use.
Would would this school fall under all the other requirements that, you know, the fire code and all of that?
Oh, sure, absolutely.
So she'd have to do some major or there would have to be some major work.
I presume so. We can talk to the Dave about what that would look like.
Yeah, I mean.
But I mean, but.
Building there doesn't mean it would be.
No. But but again, that's sort of putting the cart before the horse in the sense that we get, we're talking about a reg change. And so the reg change again applies townwide to all C thirty. But again, at that point, when when you come in with a special permit application for this particular location, we can ask for all the other things that you would be asking for for that location, much like when you went for the pediatrician's office on route one, you asked for that sort of information regarding the elevator or all the other things and where the parking is going to be and all all those things you got for the pediatrician who was going in on route one. Um, I think I've got, yeah, I I did get the the building application came through zoning for me to sign off on. So, yeah, it it has gone through.
Is is changing the regulations across town, they they in all C thirty, the only regulatory path for this, understanding that variance is unlike vanishingly unlikely.
Can do an overlay.
You know, I mean, the if you can't get a used variance, which I don't think you can, then the only other way to go in is to amend your regs or to tell her to find some other location in town where this potentially could be done. But in looking through your regs, every time you talk about school, you limit school to nonprofit. You don't have a for-profit school built into any of your other zones. So again, for this type of use to be allowed in town, you would need to amend your zone zoning regulations in some way, shape or form.
Do we have a definition notes of um schools versus learning centers?
I don't think we do.
But that may be the.
Can I ask, so um in terms of timelines, if we um again, I I don't want to say optics per se, but this idea, if we do a one-off zoning rewrite for one particular case as we're going through this whole process, like does that open the door to other pain points for us? And I only say that because, I mean, conceptually, personally, I love this idea. I know I I have direct experience with these types of schools and they can be just such an amazing resource for families in the community. So I'm inclined to say, oh, let's do what we can to support a business like this. At the same time, the timing of it is just seems unfortunate for her.
Yeah, I agree. However, there's a difference between a commission proposed text amendment and application received by a member of the public. We can we we can always receive applications from the public.
Can receive it, but if we decide, if we receive it, we've got to decide on it.
Sure, but I you can't rationally say, I'm sorry.
Oh, we can't make any decisions while we're doing the rewrite.
I mean, we have a moratorium on applications.
I know, I just wanted to pull that thread, so that.
You can be honest with her. You can say, look, your timing is not great. Would you mind coming back in six months when we adopted? You you can totally, as a matter of honesty, you can say, look, we're really busy with the reg rewrite right now. This is not a great time for you to come in. That's a fair thing for you to say. But you can't stop her from filing the application.
Anybody can come in and file an application for any change.
It wasn't stop her from filing it. I wasn't sure the flip of that, what what we, how it does impact what we are and are not able to. Shouldn't do.
Reg changes are always a legislative decision. You have the highest possible level of discretion. And again, if you want to tell her, look, the optics of doing this for you right now are not great. Would you mind waiting a few months? You're perfectly free to tell her that. There's nothing wrong with telling her that. But.
You're still filed.
Yeah, but legally, if she comes in the next day and says, tough luck, here's my application, you're kind of at that point stuck dealing.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Um, now, mind you, you can still turn it down for no reason at all. I mean, ultimately, you have complete control over your regs. If you want to just say, screw you, lady, no reg change, that's okay. So it's sort of in her interest to play along with whatever timeline you have for her, but I can't tell her no application. We're busy.
Because we don't have any defined timeframe when that is actually going to be a completed.
Well, that's my concern. I wouldn't be inclined to say, well, we're in the process doing the rewrite because there's so many unknowns. We have a plan, you know, but we all know what happens.
And I think she probably has, it's the least opportunity that.
Correct. Right, and and she might be looking at other properties in other towns.
Well, I'm sure she is.
We can't match them up.
Right.
And if there's no narrow scope approach.
Yeah, then.
Well, again, the narrower scope is probably to define what she does sufficiently tightly that you're not going to get broad categories of people trying to fit through that the the keyhole.
That's where Francisco.
And again, that's probably where we can work with Gomes on saying, if we're looking at doing this, do you have language where other towns have done this? And what does that look like?
Even her own legal counsel has that ability.
Yeah, I'm not sure she has legal counsel.
Yeah, correct.
But yeah, I mean, ultimately, again, it it has to be, I mean, the whole thing of eight two under federal statutes is it must be uniform across all, you know, across the zone. So we can't limit it in size to this particular location, but we can limit it in definition that we narrow the scope of what fits through that hole to be relatively just small so that not everybody can get through it.
We have a meeting Wednesday, don't we? To have a meeting Wednesday with Francisco.
Uh, we have a meeting. Yeah, the ten, yeah, yes.
This way after tomorrow.
Yes.
So we can probably ask him that.
Yeah, we can.
And then we can report back what he says if we can get something back at the special meeting.
Yeah.
Does that sound?
Sure, that'd be amazing.
Um, so we we can certainly talk to Gomes about it on Wednesday.
So. That doesn't, I mean, are we?
So I guess, yes, we'll happy.
We can listen. We'd be happy to listen to her. I think, is that? Right here?
Yeah, just be just be upfront with what we're.
Yeah, just but that's exactly the case.
Oh, yeah, I think she's, I I have not promised her anything. All I'm going to tell her is look, we'll listen to what you got to say and we'll try and figure out what if any interest we have to to aggressive and accommodate it.
That's what it matters. Did she indicate whether she want to take the entire building, a part of the building, one room of the building? Is it like?
No, my understanding is she's taking, she she would be interested in taking, if not the entire building, the majority of the building at least. This is again, between the combination of the school and the therapy, something that takes up a fair a fair amount of space. This is not a one-room operation. This is a.
So when she does the therapy, does that go into her school? Or is that a separate?
I'm going to have you ask. I I I I don't, I get, I I don't want to try and tell you too much because I really, this is all based on a five-minute phone call and an email. So I I I don't, I I don't feel like I can represent her properly. I think that's why we need to get her in here to ask those questions of her.
Yeah, she's she's more than, I guess, we'd like to hear what she has to say, but right now there's, you know.
Okay, and that's that's fair enough. And again, it may be when you hear, you're like, oh, no, this isn't what we want at all. So I mean, that's that's perfectly valid, but the question is, is it worth her coming in and talking? And that the answer seems to be, yes, we'd like to hear.
That's it. We, I mean, we're good with that?
Yes.
All right.
Okay.
All right.
I would suggest you invite, uh, let Michaela know that that this is going to happen on the chair of the shoreline.
Yeah, she might want to be here at the next meeting, just to listen.
I know a bakery is like on everybody's like dream list for some reason.
I know one person that wants to do that bakery.
I I know somebody that wants to take the business. So I I had an Airbnb guest who wants to open a bakery in the building there and there's already a kitchen that's already approved in there. Hopefully they're able to make it happen. Well, I thought that'd be reassuring for the gateway people because they've been talking about bakeries over there.
That's what I'm saying, yes.
You know, it may be that the bakery comes in and and that that can go in tomorrow and no one cares and it's fine. So look, again, this is all sort of hypothetical.
No, I was just joking because the bakery always shows up and it's like random, weird, special.
No, I mean, I know when we were talking a couple of days ago with the people who just bought the shop and shut the uh
Uh, big Y.
Big Y just center there. Yes, potentially getting a bakery in there is.
So that did sell, right? So.
It has been sold. The closing, let's have the, the closing is supposed to happen the last week of November or the first week of December.
So we'll wait.
So it is not.
Buying it or who's buying it? Is it like a huge corporate company or is it?
It it is a an investment firm out of Fairfield County that owns a bunch of real estate up and down New England, pretty much.
And and Montana.
Uh, big Y.
And Montana. Could have sold boots and big hats.
So, yeah.
Nothing on nine on nineteen Hall's Road Plaza? Any anyone ever come into the discuss anything about that plaza recently?
Not recently. Last I've heard of that is about six months ago at this point in time. So.
I think the plaza is not not official yet. It's.
The 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 big Y center, again, the closing is theoretically.
Theoretically, but.
Got that entire although.
It's it's nine ninety that goes all the way down, yeah.
Sixteen acres.
Bank to post office.
Like the post office owns. Yeah, the post office is the only.
That's federal land, excuse me, yeah, right. But to the post office line.
So, yeah, the and for better or worse, most of the stores in there have month-to-month leases. So.
That's unfortunate.
We'll see what we end up with.
See what happens once they pass that.
I I will say from what we've heard that the pharmacy there is not going to be there forever.
Won't be there and won't be there in the spring. Yeah, I mean, they've been closing up every day.
Walgreens as a company does not seem to be doing well. This locations does not seem to be doing well.
That's unfortunate.
So, yeah, apparently come February, March, the Walgreens is likely to be going away. So.
That's too bad with people.
Yeah, so apparently the pharmacy piece of it is already closed on weekends, which is not ideal for.
I mean, no.
There's only one, yeah.
Particularly if you are a seasonal community like ours and people are here on the weekend and they have emergency need.
It's so annoying. I always have to go to a different pharmacy because that place sucks.
From on that, I'm sure you probably will be seeing things from them as to things that they're considering doing. So it it lot lots more to hear on that one. But again, the closing on that is end of this month, first month, the first week of of December, if it gets slid out.
You know, they can put in a gas station.
They cannot put in a gas station. They are. What's the place, the coffee place from? Yeah, they're looking at getting Ashlon in there. Okay.
It's gonna be a disaster.
Pharmacy space?
No, no, it did. One of those, one of the spaces in there, yeah.
Rumor has it, there's a lot of places that won't be there.
They just saw the writing on the wall and they just.
That's what rumor is. I mean, I don't, I have no specific.
Sounds pretty specific.
It it is a lot of change for this. Coming from my own.
You're not talking about the big Y.
Yeah, this this is now sort of a Jewish family coming into a town that.
We still have the restrictions on the deeds down there.
One of the things, one of the things that I've heard
and it get we get.
Their calling card is to design their 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 into taking over failing strip malls. And their design card is to do a canvas of the town and rebuild to support the town.
That's a good.
I heard that they're not looking to support I ninety five.
I mean, they 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 are telling us that their favorite store that entire center is Bowber. So they're looking to sort of get more of those sorts of.
What about the wine?
They want to expand the.
We're on recording stuff.
Grand Wine Spirits?
Curious.
They they want.
Very Gardner West about.
They want to expand the liquor store, yes.
They want to what?
Expand the liquor store.
Oh, yeah, of course. I mean, the liquor is always going to be anywhere.
I don't need a liquor world on on my fifty six.
Yeah. Oh, like a total.
Let's let's continue so we can go.
We don't?
Uh, no, not yet. Commission members' review of training hours, Eric.
Yeah, I've been having a lot of people sending in their training to me, so I've been adding that to um the spreadsheet as people have been sending that in. Um theoretically, again, at the end of this year, I have to give give a copy of that spreadsheet to the first select woman. At the moment, there's nothing which we do with it, but I have to.
Could you send it out to us so we just make sure that what we reported you?
I'm happy to do that.
Just, you know, because I I know I sent you some.
Are we, anyone, any of us really down like?
I think it'll be good if we just like, well, like, yep, Eric, that's what I submitted to you.
Yeah.
Just in case I thought I submitted.
Didn't have a chance today to add all the ones you gave me. Those are still not on the spreadsheet yet.
Well, that's, well, that's the thing. I wanted to make sure my.
You yours should be on there. If you're not, uh, we'll add them in. Michael just sent me a long list this morning and because I was out sick Thursday and Friday, I spent all day frantically catching up on things. So yours will be added Wednesday, supposed tomorrow.
Does my clock reset on the eighteenth?
Yes.
Yes.
Twelve oh one AM on the eighteenth.
So I have until
well, we.
Nine on December twenty ninth. I'd get four more hours.
No. We we can count this other thing, that what you've already done this year will count towards that that to. But it's there, so.
Anybody clearly low or what do we need again? Maybe?
You need, okay, theoretically, after you've done your first one over a two-year period, you need four hours of the four hours, one hour has to be on affordable housing and one hour has to be on freedom of information. Okay, I will again, send the list out. Everyone can see what's on the list and see what they need and go from there.
Does the um event you sent out, event, uh, meeting you sent out for the twelfth or the fourteenth is, will that count towards training if anyone?
Yes, it will.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
The clear training does the the FOIA, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, clear clear has FOIA built into it. If you take that particular.
Yeah, I went to one of the.
Did you go to the town basement?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think that counts too.
Yeah, you would.
I know I, well, I didn't this year. I did the I had had before, but.
Okay, but again, it's supposed to do that. After you do the first year, it's a two-year period thereafter. So you know, again, for people who've done the commission and previously done their four hours in the first year, at that point, you get two years be, yeah, after that to to do the next four hour sessions. Good? So that's where we are with that.
I mean, I know it's like I had to do FOIA every year when I was working.
And I wish I could put some of my security training from my job into that because it goes into it a lot more depth than the FOIA. Oh, I don't even have to be doing any of it?
No.
Now you tell me this?
Knowledge is.
No, actually, I did. I found the clear training really helpful. I took notes.
Okay.
But I really thought I had to do it all. I feel like Mary Jo told me. I probably did.
It it was for a good cause.
Yeah, no, it was, it was the affordable housing one in particular was. Yeah, no, it was, it was, the affordable housing one in particular was very enlightening.
Don Poland is a engaging speaker.
Yeah.
He's got a lot of, he's got a lot of the knowledge.
Yeah.
He might be working in as we're going into phase two.
That's not, that's not a bad idea.
I've seen him, I've seen his act a couple of times.
Just to level set.
At the regional.
Because there were some things on it that I was surprised at, that I had misconceptions.
Only thing I'll say about Don Poland is he's had eye surgery. Not yet. Eye surgery, so I'm not sure how publicly available he is.
Okay.
I I agree, alright.
Macaroni. Nice.
Motion to adjourn at some point here, is that? Not yet, okay.
So. I, um, I wish Mike Miller was, uh, here tonight, um, so that we could thank him for, um, a job well done with us for five years.
Yeah.
He's a great, great guy, um, great insight. He, he kinda kept us focused every now and then and pulled us back in. So formally, on the record, I'd like to thank him very much for his contribution to the commission. Gonna miss him. Um, however, that said, I would like to welcome, a little bit prematurely, but I would like to welcome, um, Mr. Filiano as a full-time member. Um, congratulations, sir. Once again, look forward to working with you, um, great credentials that you're bringing to the commission as well.
When did Jane three?
What's that?
Jane three election.
And you're, I'm sorry, that's right.
Your term doesn't even start for another year.
That's right, you have to go six more years. It's like. You were in this, this role last time, it could have been your last meeting.
Yeah.
The last.
But you see, I know that I get a certificate at year fifty.
So. And what year is?
Forty-six.
This, I'm forty-six now, so.
Oh, you get a certificate?
I'm gonna get a. No, the last time, for twenty-five years, I got a cake. But I just want you all to know.
You're putting up on notice, we can start passing the.
I think at that point, you get a plaque in town hall.
Something, something, a cake, you know, everybody just.
We'll rename the meeting room the Jane Marsh Meeting Room.
This point, she's probably been in the meeting room more than any other person.
And and yes, and congratulations. Welcome again to another round.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
But I would like to just, you're gonna get this letter tomorrow. Um, it'll be sent out by Craig. And, um, it was sent to us, to me this evening. Fellow commission members, I would like to congratulate Jane and Mike and wish them the best. Jane's experience is so vital to the commission, and Mike brings a broad array of land use knowledge, especially with his background, chairing affordable housing. It was an honor and privilege working with all of you. We all do this because we love our town. Olime is very fortunate to have such a solid group of citizens on zoning to work on the rewrite, and then he said a few things about me, and he says, my best wishes for all of you, Mike. So I think this will be going out. Craig will send it out tomorrow. Just wanted you guys to know.
Dick will invite us to his wedding? Wait, what?
He's just jumped out of a plane this weekend.
Again, this weekend?
Yeah.
Cuz his, was it his father or his grandfather?
I'm not sure, but I.
Sir, it was his father? Yeah, I guess.
Yeah, he was just jumping this weekend again.
Yeah. So, um, next meeting is Monday seventeenth, it'll be here. Eric says it'll be up in the Mezzanine Conference Room. That's what it says right there, too. Yeah.
That's great. Six thirty?
Six thirty to nine, and then our next regular meeting is December eighth, six thirty here. That being said, thank you, everyone. I'll take a motion to adjourn. So move second by, um, Denise, all in favor?
Aye. Everybody.
Thanks, yeah.